We're just putting that fine home at the end of it.
So Mary Ellen, you're gonna, okay guys, we are ready. So, would like to open the Georgetown Planning Board February 11th, 2015, Planning Board Merit Meeting, beginning with approval of minutes.
Does the chair move or we postpone the minutes until our next meeting?
I think that's probably a good idea since they're not ready. Thank you.
Seconded.
It's been motioned and seconded to postpone the review of the minutes till our next Planning Board meeting and discussion, seeing no discussion, all in favor. Aye. Correspondents? Pretty straightforward there, some from the town of Groveland. Bylaw amendment for associate member and bylaw amendment for medical marijuana dispensaries. Anything you guys wanted to comment on that?
It's Groveland, I think it's just cursory, it's a courtesy notice, right?
Yep. So, moving on to vouchers, there are none. Moving on to our first public hearing, and the only public hearing of the night, is the bylaw amendment, solar energy facility continued from January 14th. So, to that, Tilly, would you like to start?
Yeah, Tilly, would you read it to us?
Or we...
Oh, boy.
Twenty-seven pages.
You don't have to.
Okay, let somebody else go, I have so many.
There's only one other, it's you.
That's you, Harry, go for it.
Let me find. But I do wanna make sure, this has all been vetted with beating this horse many, many times. There is one section that I think we may want to look at, and just make sure that we look at it and verify it. Chapter 165, 141, we're looking at the fifth page on our doc. It's 141A, dimension and density requirements. And, oh, there's the record.
Hello there. All set.
Hi Bob.
How we doing?
Good, well, we're currently reviewing.
Yep, you haven't missed anything. We, um, we've got through the minutes, they're postponed till the next meeting, correspondence, vouchers, when the public hearing, and we have just started it, so you're right on time. Also, solar energy facility, and Harry was ready to take over the show.
Well, just one thing that I did wanna look at, and I, I just wanted to be clear about, because I, I don't know if these are exactly what we are looking for. In a, I'm on the fifth page of it.
Yes.
Uh, I believe so.
No, it's actually in the...
In the main packet.
Thank you.
And, um, on the fifth page, there's chapter 165, 141, which is about halfway down the page.
Yep.
Is A of that section, dimension and density requirements. And it talks about setbacks. And the purpose of setbacks mitigate adverse impacts on abutting properties for solar energy facility, which incorporates any and all that we have under the definition, so that's everything. Compliance with front side and rear setbacks shall be as follows. There may be a slight conflict between this section and an earlier section that states that the underlying zoning should set the setbacks.
Do you know where that other section is?
I'd have to look in it real, I'd have to look in it. But, um... There's only a couple pages.
I have a...
Do you have that, Tilly, do you know where that is?
Well, you're looking for that. My comment about that section is that those setbacks are all, in my opinion, related to the ground, solar energy facility, not to all. And I think, um...
You think that was the intent?
Well, when you look at it, I think the intent was that for a roof, it's already built, so they had to meet the zoning already.
Yes, of the building.
So, everything here looks to me like it meant for the, for the ground project.
Well, I think ground projects are exempted from that, because if you look on, on the very first page, under definitions, when they talk about the term solar energy facility, for the purpose of the bylaw, solar energy facilities shall consider both onsite solar energy facilities, excuse me, and commercial solar energy facilities.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I think that...
If it's commercial.
Yeah.
It's ground or roof, which it should have a site plan review anyway, and there should be setbacks for it. And if it's not a ground mounted one, then, well, if it's an onsite solar energy facility, then it's ground or roof mounted.
Well, to begin with, what I had done was I had edited the definitions.
Oh.
So, therefore, when I got finished with that, everything here referred to the ground. What I did, if you wanted to go back to 165, 138.
Hmm, on the definition?
First one here, commercial. I wrote, "A ground mounted installation where the primary use is electrical generation to be sold," and everything else there, I left. And I took out "end or roof mounted solar," and I, and I wrapped that out. When I got to the ground mounted solar, I wrote, "A solar photovoltaic system that is structurally mounted on the ground," period. I think we could've taken out, it's not roofed, that's pretty repetition. And then on the onsite solar energy facility, I edited, um, the second sentence there. "I took out end onsite solar energy facility will generate electricity." No, I took out "in onsite solar energy facility." And I added that to the next, the property, so it would read, "A ground mounted and/or roof mounted solar photovoltaic installation," I don't know if I'm pronouncing it correctly, "but installation for the purpose of electrical generation where the facility is an accessory use, the principal use of the property, will generate electricity to be primary, primarily generating, consumed by the principal use of the parcel," period. And then left the rest of that. So, there, there had to be edited.
Oh, so you just think it was sort of redundant to say onsite solar facility again?
And, um, I think to make it as simple read, definitions are really gotta be very plain and not so repetitious as, as this is. Like a solar energy facility, that one alone should be for the purpose of this bylaw. And a solar energy facility shall consider both onsite solar energy and commercial solar facilities for the conversion of solar energy into electric power, period.
Well, how about this, I'll make a suggestion, that we take one of these at a time, and...
Okay.
If you have, you know, we can start with one of yours at a time, and I do wanna finish with what Harry was...
Let's, let's, let's...
Do you wanna come back?
Let's, yeah, that way we move forward to backward.
Okay, so let's, let's, let's start with the first one you wanna talk about, Tilly, and let's see if we're all in it.
Just a process question.
Sure.
What's our objective tonight, writing this? To fix it, to edit it, to rewrite it?
Fix it for final, fix it for final.
For final.
Well, hopefully, whatever changes we make are minor, not major, at this point in time, and that it goes back and can be continued to the next hearing for those changes to be incorporated right back and for final approval.
I would hope so.
That's, that's what I'm...
Let's put this to bed today.
I think that's a good question, Bob. I think, I think, I was thinking that when I was going through this, what is the purpose?
Last cut.
Where, what's our goal?
Final cut.
No, I mean, on the verbiage, what's our goal in this bylaw?
Oh, oh, oh.
Period, not even looking at what's there. And I think the goal is, is that we don't want to, we, we can't really, um, be too restrictive, and any of our regulations has to be reasonable. And we can, we can say what district, certain, like, say the groundwater, ground, ground solar one, I think should be probably in the industrial district. But that's what we could do, we could say what district each one should be in, or we could say one of them to be in, but we, really, I think that's our goal, is that by law, we can't be restrictive, and we can't prevent it, we can't make it prohibitive. But we can say, yeah, well, you can put this in Georgetown in this district. And for, as far as dimensions, you could use what you already have on your zoning, restrictions for structures, or you could add.
So, so let's, let's, let's try to kick off one at a time, or else I can't keep track of it all.
Okay. I hear ya. All right, we'll work on the definitions?
Yeah, let's, let's...
Okay. The commercial one. I, I think it should be just, um... It's strictly for where the primary use is electrical generation to be sold, period.
Wholesale.
To wholesale, electricity markets. That's, that's the difference between the commercial.
And the onsite.
And, and the, um...
Is, is everybody with me on that, that that's the distinction between the two?
Yeah, that's...
Say again?
Well, with the commercial facility, commercial solar energy facility, specific primary use is to make electricity to sell.
On the open market.
On the open market, wholesale. With the onsite solar energy facility, its principal purpose is, is an accessory use to the use of whatever it is?
To the grid.
To the principal use.
No, to the, to the, to the principal use of the building.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
Right.
And, and of course, there may be residual that would go out to the grid and come back, but, but it's the...
Or it could be an adjunct to it, to just reduce the, the cost of Georgetown electric.
Primarily, most of the electricity that is generated is going to be used onsite.
Yep.
Oh, onsite, onsite solar, so.
All right. Then the solar energy facility is predominantly a generalization.
You got it.
That it's gonna create energy, solar energy into electric power.
It's a generic term.
Yeah, that's what I think, it should be very simplistic like that.
So, you, so, um, can, so, how would you like that to read then?
I would, uh, all right, I would just add on to...
Commercial solar energy facility.
Right, for the purpose, oh, the commercial you wanna read, okay.
Well, that's the first one we were starting with?
All right. The ground mounted, take out "end or roof mounted," take all of that out.
Take out "and/or roof mounted."
Right.
And why is that?
Because, uh, commercial, to me, should be just allowed with the ground mounted, not...
Why is that?
Because I, from everything I've seen, it's the ground mounted that is the, the big money and people just, it's like a business.
It's just bigger.
It's a business.
It's bigger, it can capture more solar energy.
Probably bigger, yeah, probably bigger.
Well, I mean, what's...
But I, I didn't see any material...
What if somebody comes up with a photovoltaic cell that's so efficient, you can put it on the roof of your manufacturing and make extra energy at night?
Maybe that, that's possible, but, but you can make it, when it's on your roof, to me, at this point in time anyway, maybe down the line, there'll be some other improvements to, to the science, but I think right now, the ground mounted one, as far as I could determine from, from our literature that we collected, is only for commercial. They're the ones that have the solar farms.
I don't think you can, I don't think you can make that blanket statement, Tilly, that roof mounted is for onsite and ground mounted is for commercial. And, and anyway, why make that distinction?
Because the commercial, um, you, to me, the ground is, the ground mounted one is more intrusive to the site. I mean, you're gonna see it on the ground, you're gonna be more concerned with all of those, um, approvals that he has for 140.
Why are you restricting this from the roof? The ground is fine for commercial, but you're saying strike the part about on the roof.
Right.
Why restrict it? What, to what end?
If I may, I don't see that as restricting it, I see that as granting carte blanche to anyone who wants to put it on a roof, which I really don't think we should, we'd wanna do. I can envision, I can envision a forty-foot tall structure adapted to a roof, a very flat roof, that would be pretty noticeable, cause a great deal of reflection at the right time of day, mounted on a roof. And I, I just don't think something like that should just be signed off by the building inspector without some kind of site plan review. Really don't think so.
None of this, um, none of this, when you get to site approval, none of, none of what I see.
I think...
Even addresses site approval.
Yeah, I don't think this would, this would exclude it.
I'm looking all over this, and I'm saying, well, there's a title there, that's it, on 140. That's all that there was.
Harry, is, is what I'm under, is, am I understanding you to say that, that, that you were, that you would be in agreement with Tilly to strike that?
No, I disagree, I disagree, I'm afraid.
Then I, then I'm not understanding what you were saying?
What I'm saying is, with a commercial solar energy facility, you could have, you could very well have a ground mounted commercial.
Yep.
Or a roof mounted commercial.
Correct.
Okay, because someone with a large roof may wish to lease that roof, not take any of the power in and of themselves, but to just be a, to have a tenant upstairs on the roof that puts up a facility, puts the photovoltaics up, the structure and everything, and I'm, I'm a little concerned about that, Tilly.
On their home.
No, 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 on an industrial building, on a flat-roofed industrial building. If it's residential, they don't need to permit it.
But if they're gonna sell it just for commercial and not for the primary use?
If, yes.
They would. That's how I, I determined it.
Yes, but if they were going to do that, okay, and they put it on the roof, all of a sudden, there's no oversight at all.
It's not commercial and it's not onsite.
It's a regular facility.
It is commercial, but it doesn't fit the definition.
That's what I mean, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
So, I, I...
According to this definition, it's not commercial.
I would, so as I'm listening, I, I would say that, that I'm, I'm in agreement that I think that should stay as part of that sentence. So, Tilly, do you wanna take another stab at trying to convince us that it doesn't wanna stay, or do you wanna move on?
Well, the, the thing about it is, is...
I wanna try to pick each one of these off and just keep moving.
All right.
Tilly, I know you, you're seeing a problem, what's the problem?
I don't see, I can't see that happening. Do you have an example of that ever happening? That somebody is gonna lease their roof to allow somebody to put solar on there, not for their benefit, other than the renting?
Tilly, Tilly, my question is, if you strike that, then for someone who wants to build a commercial solar energy facility, they can't put it on the roof. Under any circumstance, they can't do it, if we strike those words.
Only for commercial.
That's exactly what I'm saying, for commercial.
Then they're forced to put it on the...
They're forced to put it on the ground. And why do we wanna restrict them if, you know, i- i- in Harry's example, they're gonna build some strange structure up there?
I can see that.
I can see us saying that that's not an appropriate construction, there, there are terms for that.
And at the same time, though, I can see a very benign installation as well.
I can't see anybody putting it on their roof unless they were gonna benefit for the electricity.
But what's, what's the problem?
What is happening now, Tilly, with that, what is happening now with that, is there are programs out there where private homeowners, the construction costs are paid by the utility company, and they get to take what utility that they need for servicing their own house, but then they sell the rest of their...
Well, that's not commercial, as far as our definition. Commercial is just, that's it, you're only going to sell it to the market, you're not gonna use it yourself.
Are we saying that, that if...
So, that's the difference.
If a guy has a manufacturing plant in Georgetown, and he wants to put up photovoltaics, right, to reduce his, his energy cost, but he says, "Oh, you know what I can do on Saturday and Sunday? I can push that right back in the grid."
That would be an onsite, that would be an onsite solar facility.
That would be okay, as, as it's written.
As an onsite.
As an onsite.
But it would be for commercial purposes.
I'm envisioning something.
No, it wouldn't be...
Where someone has a building, a big company has a building, has a flat roof.
Yeah.
They abandoned the building, and while that building sits, they lease the roof.
It's like billboards.
Might as well, it's not hurting me.
Right.
I own the building, I'm paying taxes on it, it's a, it's empty, I can't rent the building. But you know what? Someone wants to rent the roof, and if it's on their dime, and I'm gonna get some income from it, don't anything you wanna build, kid.
I don't know of any of that happening, honestly?
But I don't see any, I don't, I'm hearing a lot of, you know, reasons that, why it could happen, but I, I'm, I don't, I'm not hearing any reason why leaving that there causes a problem.
Well, I think you have to key in on the primary use on, in that, in that definition, the same as when you have onsite.
But what does that have to do with where the...
The primary use is that you're gonna, the...
To be sold.
The primary use is electrical generation.
To be sold wholesale.
To be sold, that's what commercial is, period. You're not gonna, if you're the property owner of that house or that building, you're not gonna use any of that electricity that it will generate for yourself.
Well, when you, wait, no, time out, when you say where the primary use, that is not all, that's saying the primary use.
And I, and I like, I like that, actually.
I do, too.
The primary use is to sell it.
Mm-hmm, but they could use some of it internally as well.
No, they could not.
Well, well, why not? The way, the way this...
It's not primary use.
Well, the way this, the way this is written, my, my understanding of, when, when you use the word the primary use, it means the primary use is to sell it, but you can also, if there's a little piece of it that you're gonna use for your own building, you could do that as well. Primary does not mean black or white, all or nothing.
Okay.
It's, it's a preponderance of it, it's most of.
So, you're saying there's, there's a fifty percent mark somewhere there? If I intend to sell more than fifty percent, I'm a commercial solar energy facility? And if I intend to sell...
It's implication, isn't it? Use half of it?
Yeah, now you...
Half of it, now I'm a, an onsite.
I mean, it's a different, yeah, I would say so, actually.
Then this is perfect, because you know what? We've captured both, just as we...
Except you repeat it when you get to the onsite one.
Okay, so can we, can we, I think I'm hearing three are saying, "Let's leave that sentence the way it is."
All right.
So then, so that'll stay as is, and so then your, your next concern, question, Tilly?
Okay, um, the ground mounted solar, uh, I would take out...
Mary Ellen, you taking notes on it?
I am.
Thank you.
I would, I would remove, and it's not roof mounted.
Good luck, luck to you.
I'm sorry, say again?
I don't think we have to repeat, and it's not roof, roof mounted, we're already calling it ground mounted.
This is onsite solar?
Ground mounted solar.
Ground mounted solar.
Okay.
That is structurally mounted on the ground.
That's a simple one.
And it's not roof mounted.
Was it something I said? Was it something I said? Are you saying, Tilly, that you believe it to be redundant?
Yeah.
With the words "and is not roof mounted?"
Right, I don't think that's necessary.
I can, I can see that.
I, I have no problem with deleting that.
Okay.
Bob? So that will get deleted.
Perhaps we wanna put mounted on the ground or to a structure on the ground, or?
Just leave it. The next one is, um... The onsite solar energy. The first sentence is fine, and this is, this is for an accessory use onsite.
They're using the electricity, for the most part, to power whatever their manufacturing or their process, or, they're, they wanna, they wanna use the electricity for their own use.
Right.
And, as we said before, there may be some periods of time where an excess amount that isn't being used would get sold back to the grid.
That's right. And I would add on to the principal use of the property.
You had suggested deleting as onsite solar energy.
Yeah.
Is this standard language? Accessory use to the principal use of the property?
Yeah.
I mean, that just, it sounds...
It's clear, it's pretty clear.
It is repetitious.
I don't think so, I don't think it's clear.
Chunky, but it's...
It is repetitious, but...
It's not, it's not easy to obfuscate.
It's not really saying anything.
Well, it's not easy to obfuscate, that's for sure.
All right.
That's some functionality.
I'm still on onsite, guys.
Oh, good, go for it.
After the principal use of the property, um...
Would you like to strike "and/or" in onsite solar energy?
Yeah.
And just put "this facility"?
Yep.
Wait a second.
Okay, I'm having a hard time keeping up with you.
Yeah, we...
Oh, okay.
I would scratch that sentence.
What's happening for me is just when one person's trying to, and then another person jumps in, and I'm trying to catch up with the sentences, so...
Okay, then, just that sentence I would take out.
Okay, which one?
The next one. An onsite solar energy facility on the onsite solar energy facility.
Delete that section.
Yeah, you don't have to, we know it's gonna generate electricity. We've already called it necessary use, we don't have to repeat and define it as primarily collection. Okay?
You're saying, strike the whole?
The whole sentence.
That one sentence out.
Well, that sentence is, is kinda important, because it's pointing out that it is primarily consumed by the principal use of the parcel.
Isn't that the guts of what that is?
Yes, that's, that's the heart of it.
Isn't that the same thing, in calling it an accessory use to the principal use of the property? I mean, it's repetition, in my mind.
I don't know what you're trying to say.
I think accessory use is more confusing, quite frankly.
Yeah, well, that's what it technically is.
All right, then take that out and then put the other in.
No, I'm sure it is, I'm sure it is technically, I'm sure it techni, I, I, it is technically that, but you'd have, you have to then go to the charts to understand what accessory is and the sentence.
Or you could just read it here.
Or you could just read it here, which it does then go on to say.
Sort of stands on its own, yeah.
Correct.
Are, are you saying that it's just redundant that we use the word "and," the phrase "and an onsite solar energy facility"?
No.
Would it be clearer if we just said, "These facilities"?
I thought, Tilly, you had suggested to delete that section and then make it one sentence, and that reads really well.
Yeah.
That's the notes I had just taken.
Yeah.
So, you, you make it one sentence, "Principal use of the property will generate electricity primarily consumed by the principal use of the parcel."
Right.
End of story.
That's it.
So, are we adding the word "which"?
You're just taking out one, two, three, four, five.
Yeah, I think you want to.
Will generate.
Which will generate, yeah.
It's fine, yep.
All right.
Yeah, okay.
So, so would someone please read that sentence in the way it's to be, to be?
I believe it's going to say, "A ground mounted and/or roof mounted solar, solar voltaic installation for the purposes of electrical generation, where the facility is an accessory use to the principal use of the property, which will generate electricity to be primarily consumed by the principal use of the parcel."
Got it.
Yep.
Is that right? Did I get that right, Tom?
Is everybody in, okay with that?
Yep, absolutely.
All right?
The, the solar energy facility now should be much more simplistic than this. "For the purpose of this bylaw, a solar energy facility shall consider both onsite solar energy facilities and commercial for the conversion of solar energy into electric power, period." for the conversion of solar energy into electric power, period.
Well, what about everything else that leads up to it? All the wires that go to it, all the roads that access it, all the, all the transformers, e- everything else that one might argue.
Repeat that again.
Isn't really, is that part of the, see, this is the definitions, it's.
And I, actually, I, I think this is a, it's saying you're responsible for a bunch of other stuff, including, but not limited to, this stuff.
Right.
It gives them a clue.
Yeah.
Of how they're gonna be evaluated.
Okay.
I think basically what it's saying is.
Just a clue of how.
Don't just, don't just.
Tilly said yes.
Move on before, before we do move on.
Sorry.
So for solar.
Thank you.
Solar energy facility, before we do move on.
Yeah.
For the purpose of this bylaw, a solar energy facility shall consider.
I don't like the word.
It doesn't mean, that doesn't mean anything. It means.
Shall mean.
That is, has a little more teeth to it and does start to mean something.
Wanna, wanna get rid of the word consider and?
Shall mean, shall, shall mean, uh, shall mean both onsite and commercial. Yeah, it needs something like that.
I like that.
Consider doesn't, I can live with mean.
Strike, consider and.
Yep.
You all okay with?
Yeah.
And, yeah, mean.
So that's a, everyone's in favor of that.
If I, before we change that page, okay, if I can go up to the scope of authority, I believe, I could be wrong, but we were only gonna do a site plan. The planning board, we're not gonna do a special permit. We're only having a site approval for solar energy facilities, correct?
Mm-hmm.
We're, we're not saying that.
Okay.
No, and I couldn't find it anywhere. Okay?
But isn't, isn't site plan approval a permit?
No, it allows you to get a construction, it allows you to get a, a permit. With approval, you're allowed to get a permit.
What are you approving? If you're not approving a permit?
No.
No, no, no.
It's not, it's not, it's not on the same vein as a special permit where you would have to register it. And it's different. This says nothing. It doesn't say what, what kind of a permit are you gonna give?
It's saying, it's.
Tell me.
I think it's a good point, actually.
Is it a building permit? Is a spec, is a special permit, what is this falling under?
It's not gonna be a special permit, as far as I remember.
What, you guys put this thing together, what permit is it? Is it just a site plan approval?
It's just a site plan approval, is all it is.
So then that's what you would want to insert in there.
With some, with some other distinct, site plan approval review.
So then that's what you would, for the purposes of this bylaw, the planning board shall act as the body of local government designated as the site plan.
Oh, uh, back on page five.
Yeah.
At the very top, no building permit for a solar energy will be issued until PGA has rendered its decision on the site plan approval application.
Oh, okay. So we become.
Site plan approval.
Well, no, that says that we are the permit granting authority for the site plan.
We are the PGA, yes.
But I'm, what I'm saying is, you wanna add, I think you wanna add that.
Oh, you wanna make it a little clearer? Sure.
For the purposes of this bylaw, the planning board shall act as the body of local government designated as the.
Permit granting authority for site plan approval?
That's fine. Permit granting authority for site plan approval. That's fine too.
Modify page five.
Bob, where is that?
That's the very first paragraph from page five.
One of seven.
I see it.
No building permit for it, et cetera.
Everybody on board with that one?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and that's just a clarification, I think.
Yeah, okay.
Now, the only downside is that we're, now we're saying the same thing in two different places. So if anything changes. Tick tock.
So, I'm sorry, can somebody repeat what you would like to have there?
Scope of authority or?
Yes, scope of authority.
For the purpose of this bylaw, the planning board shall act as the body of local government designated as the permit granting authority for site plan approval for solar energy facility projects.
Thank you.
I like that. That works. Tilly?
Okay. We're going to the next page, guys?
Yep, you're, you're leading the show.
All right. Now, I got down to safety standards. Everything here was okay until I got down to F. I think we should leave out upon request by the permitting granting authority, start with the, capital letters. The solar energy facility owner and slash or operator shall cooperate with local emergency services in developing an emergency response plan and operations and maintenance plan submitted with the application for the planning board.
Why, why, why shall they cooperate versus why not just do it?
Well, yeah, well, what, I thought.
They may not be equipped to, you know, put out a big fire, you know.
Got it, got it.
They might come up with something that we didn't think of, I guess.
Can I, um, can I just say something here? Um, at the very beginning of that, you know, actually it begins on the other page, on page one. And it talks about general provisions, and I think what they're actually, what we're actually talking about is the application that is being given.
Right.
That's what A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H is all about.
Right. That's okay. But when it gets to the safety standards, I think it should be corrected.
These are general provisions.
To be more detailed.
Yeah, the thing is, you could put a, a free A and say, application. Application, blah, 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 blah. And then V, administration. I mean, it's, it's almost a topic in its own right. But you're right, the way it's structured.
Yeah, I think A, B, C, D, and H. Yeah, this is all, oh, okay. I, I thought it was.
Yeah, but structured that way, yeah, it's structured that way, but I'm, I don't.
Right.
What if you're confused, Harry?
Well, it, it looks to me like under general provisions here, the first thing it mentions is, application for a solar energy facility shall be reviewed by the PGA for consistency with the provisions of this section. And then it's saying everything that needs to be.
That's what I would infer as well.
Application is how I'm seeing it.
Well, that's, well, what you, the application sentence is, is under general provisions.
Right, and then under that.
So that's just like.
But under that, then you have.
Yeah.
A, a bullet list.
Right.
This is a bullet list.
The implication is that the bullet list has to do with that paragraph, when I think that the paragraph should have its own heading called application. Cause that's all it has to say about the application.
It, it might make it easier to understand.
Yeah.
You wanna add application to what?
As a, as a heading.
General provisions, applications?
As a heading, like admin, uh, administration, compliance with zoning laws and ordinances, et cetera.
Take out general provisions?
No.
No, no. Just make that paragraph, that sentence, section A.
Okay.
And make section B, administration, section C.
Or maybe we could make it one?
Okay.
I think it should be at the same level as those other.
Well, then we go on and it seems like this B is part of application. Almost everything coming along is application.
Exactly. I think that's what Bob's saying, that, that is all about the application.
All right, but, but.
Maybe we could just.
But we haven't.
Maybe we could just, make it a one or maybe we could just add a sentence?
Well, I don't think, I don't think all, I don't think I am, but what I, what I, I think what I think what's missing is that.
What are you saying?
So general provisions is the, is the section header.
Okay.
And everything under one sixty-five, one thirty-nine are general provisions.
Okay.
But the first one doesn't have any letter to it.
Correct. Okay.
And almost thinking that that needs an A and the other ones all need to be adjusted.
And they'll be indented, yeah.
Then they're, then they're okay.
Okay.
Assuming all the rest, A through H are.
That makes sense.
Part and parcel of the application process.
Okay.
So it would be A and then one, two, three, four, and then we, we.
Yeah, or whatever.
A and one, two, three, four?
Yeah, and then whatever the next indent is.
Right.
To the one in parentheses and the two in parentheses.
It's, it's your, it's your letters that you're gonna move.
Are those all part of the application? Is proof of liability insurance part of the application?
Yeah.
Is financial surety part of the financial application?
Yeah.
Well, you know what? I, I don't think you can do E until after you've done your application. E.
What, utility notification?
Yeah, well, because it, it requires a documentation from the light department that the facility will connect into the grid.
Well, that's just the point, Harry. You want everything to come to you completed.
But how can they do that before they apply?
They can.
Well, they, they can ask. Were I to get my site plan approved, would I be able to connect?
Yeah.
An approved plan.
And they would need that prior to walking in the door?
Sure.
That's what, I mean, that's what it.
Service. We do give some service.
Okay, guy doesn't wanna spend a lot of money.
I'm gonna build X and what do you, you know, what kind of emergencies requirements would I have to?
I think I understand what you're saying about safety standards, though. Um, and I, I get the upon request by PGA, that really has to come out.
Yeah.
It should be, the applicant shall demonstrate or something to that effect. And, and definitely not.
All right, so I'm just having a hard time keeping up with you guys. I really am tonight.
Okay. We'll, we'll, we'll bring you some more.
Well, I, I thought.
It's been a long week.
But I thought we were talking about general provisions in the application, and then all of a sudden we zeroed in on safety standards.
Are, what did we, what did we come up with there? Are we?
Well, I don't think we had resolved it.
Okay.
And so we just all of a sudden jumped into another topic. And so I wanna, I guess I just wanna go back and try to pick one off at a time and get consensus with everybody, so.
Good idea.
There was concern about general provisions and there was some concern that some of these were part of the application and part of them, part, some of these were not necessarily part of the application. And I think the way to resolve that is that general provisions are a catchall. And that's why they're called general provisions, and they don't necessarily all have to be falling under application. They don't all. And without rewriting this, I think all you need to do is take general provisions, you give a A to the application for solar shall be reviewed by PGA. You give an, an A to begin that one. And then you take the A, B, C, and you don't indent, you just change those letters so that A becomes B, B becomes C, and those just change.
Everything just moves down one.
Alphabet, right?
Yeah, and then that whole pa, and then the whole package is general provisions, and they are what they are.
And it decouples these from the application, and we're not describing what your application is gonna look like.
These are just general provisions that you always flip through to make sure you're meeting them at, at some point in the process, so.
I can go for that. Sure.
So that would take care of that one, and now then you jumped into safety standard, Harry.
Okay.
So what were you saying about that?
Um, well, actually, Tilly brought it up, so I'll leave it there.
Okay, whoever.
You're just, you're just removing upon request by the PGA and start out with a capital D. Solar energy facility owner and or operator shall cooperate with local emergency services in developing an emergency response plan and maintenance plan. The owner or operator shall identify a responsible person for public inquiries throughout the life of the facility.
A maintenance plan is I.
Yes, but it's, you're repeating.
Three more forward.
Yeah, but you're, why I, I put it there was trying to cut back on the same, the same criterias.
I think you have a nice, clear paragraph, I, operations and maintenance plan that stands alone nicely and doesn't need to be moved or shortened, and, and I wouldn't try to incorporate it somewhere else, otherwise you're starting to rewrite this thing. I think versus just.
Yeah, but bear in mind, you're in emergency services, right?
Eyes, cause it's all right there.
We're talking about an emergency services plan under F, soon to be G one.
Well, I think it's linked a lot with emergency service.
Maintenance?
Yes, because it, they are going to have to keep it maintained for safety provisions.
Well, that's part of the maintenance.
And that's why I put it together.
No, no, but I mean, it's just simply part of.
But if you don't want it, that's up to you.
I don't think it's necessary, cause I think any maintenance plan would include, you know.
Yeah, but if they put it up and they don't do any maintenance on it, it's creating a hazard.
If it wasn't already in I, I'd agree with you.
Sure.
I would. It would be something that was missed.
All right, then.
I, I do actually have a, a question that, that goes back to something that we did discuss in the context of the structure of this, which was, um, what's? Does, let, let me, let me see how to put this simply. We're gonna get rid of, upon request of the planning board, dah dah dah, shall develop a, an emergency response plan. Is that plan part of the site plan approval process? Do we have to see it? Do we have to approve the plan?
Well, this is why I would like to see it, something about it being submitted as part of the application.
It already says that, I believe.
Does your new A.
Yeah.
Application for a solar energy facility shall be reviewed by the PGA for consistency with the provisions of this section.
And, and you got administration prior to construction, all provisions of this bylaw article shall be met.
Prior to construction, but not prior to approval. I, I, I don't wanna nitpick it, but.
Well, I think.
Well, let me ask you this. As it stands, the way we're, we have it now with upon request by the PGA cut out, does, is this pretty clear to someone that's coming in that this is something that they have to put a little thought to and create prior to the application? Or is this something that they do after they get an approval? Because it says, prior to issuance of a building permit. And I'm just wondering if.
Well, the PGA, it says also, the PGA shall confirm adequacy of, of emergency access and safety procedures prior to approval.
Of an onsite plan? Okay. Okay, okay, then I'm good with. I'm good with it, just, just killing me upon request by PGA.
Okay.
I'm good with that, then.
All right.
I would add under security.
Financial security?
Uh, I think they had a.
Financial security, you mean?
I would add sec, uh, number three, security in there, and then I would put.
I'm lost. I'm lost.
On the same page, we're on two, right?
Page two.
Unauthorized access under that three. This is all part of F, safety.
Okay, you're adding a, a three. I understand.
So I, I would put security as number three and then put in the fencing. Uh, the ground mounted solar provolotics shall have fencing eight feet around the utility.
Is that eight feet mentioned somewhere else, or is that just something that?
No, I don't, I don't think so. I, I.
Where did you come up with eight feet?
I got that from Amesbury's, I think. Amesbury had a good one.
Are, are you saying that that should be? Uh, shouldn't that be in design standards if, if you're gonna do that?
Uh, let's see, whereabouts is design?
Design standards on page five.
Uh, section B.
Where we talk about lighting and then we talk about landscape. We talk about signage. You, you're talking about physical security of the compound.
Yeah, I think it's, I don't know, I think it's two different things. I mean, that, the design is mainly landscaping. I don't know. I, I felt it was two different. I don't know how you guys feel.
So, but safety standards is about, is about an emergency response plan.
Yeah, there's a massive, there's a massive fire.
Then there's two.
And the fire department has to go in there and.
And I think.
It's daytime.
It's daytime.
Right, but.
The cables are live.
Yeah, 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 but what I'm, but what I'm saying is I think the s- the fence issue is more of a site element and is not part of a plan one puts together for responding to the the fire that there.
So you think it should be under design standards as well?
Yeah.
If it if included.
Yeah.
Okay.
To be included.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's how I'm seeing it, Tilly.
I'm I'm seeing it, I'm seeing it not as a design, but as a safety mechanism. That's how I'm looking at it.
It it is a safety mechanism.
Uh-huh.
It it is. I I agree with you there, um.
So you wanna put that into the design?
Maybe we pick that up, yeah, in in design.
What is design?
Page five, design standards.
Two, three, so we add four to that.
Should we add a four?
Yeah, add a four. That's on page six.
That's kinda interesting, because um.
What?
Well, I I uh. The the idea of a an eight-foot chain link fence.
Hmm.
That could be interesting visually.
In a horrible sort of way.
Yeah, concertina wire, razor wire on the top.
Well, what I.
Right, right.
I think.
Is it going out or pointing in?
I think how they have it in Amesbury is it's a uh a black, a black vinyl-covered fencing. I think that's how they did it, so you couldn't.
Shouldn't it be up to the applicant, though, that if the applicant is concerned about their own property, that they're the ones that put the fence up? And they propose the fence?
It would be the abutters that would be, would have a concern if they had children, for instance.
That's what, yeah, I was thinking of the children.
You know, it, my first reaction was, uh, do we really wanna restrict it? Is this only rel- relevant to uh commercials are also on sites? If somebody puts up a little farm, 'cause he's got a nice sunny south-facing bank, um.
Well, you do, so you do have it here.
Be fenced off.
So you have, you have design standards, number two, landscaping, which is the very last one on page five of seven.
Well, see, I'm I'm still in gear for before. I was in mind that the ground-mounted one would be in the industrial district and people aren't, that doesn't mean that a lot of people are twenty-four hours there. So I'm thinking that it would need a fence if it was in that district.
So so number two, landscape, landscaping says applicant shall submit a plan detailing the following, and it goes on to list fencing.
I'm sorry, where is that? What page?
Uh, page five of seven.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Very last item under design standards, number two, landscaping. If you read that through and you go on to page six of seven, you'll see one of the elements in there is listed as fencing.
All proposed vegetative screening and/or fencing or planting. Screening or fencing and planting.
So that's like, you know, consider, consider a typical project comes to the town and and and, you know, there it is, fencing or screening and and the neighbor is here and they say, look, we have kids and we're really concerned, and then the board says, well, maybe this needs to be fencing and not just buffer screening, planting. But it's, there is.
I like the fact that it's less restrictive.
Well, what, well, what does all proposed changes into landscape, how is that associated with a fence? So if they don't do any changes to the landscape?
They have to. They have to do a change, or they wouldn't be coming with a project.
But.
In other words, it starts in a natural state.
I'm a little confused, including temporary or permanent roads or driveways, grading, area of, alright, if anybody is gonna do all that, grading, area of.
Any of that.
Planting, exterior lighting and structures.
If they were.
So i- if you, the way you have it is that it's gonna be even on your roof, a ground-mounted, um.
Right, if you put it on.
They're not gonna do any of that.
Well, yes, because they're not changing the landscape of the site, so.
Yeah.
They wouldn't have to show it, right?
Well, I it would, I mean, someone could put something on a roof and they're going to have to have a road to get there, right, or a driveway to get there?
Well, you had to have a driveway to get to the building anyway, wouldn't you?
Well, if nothing changes, if nothing changes, if if the driveway stays the same, if the grading stays the same, if literally nothing changes to the site, um.
Then they're cool.
Then they're cool.
Right.
Then you're left with the issue of dealing with these, whatever they are on top of the roof.
Security, uh, but then fencing really doesn't come into play, does it?
Well, if it's on the roof.
The fact is, then they're on the spot. I mean, if there's a problem, it's the same as if there's a problem that
Oh, when you're in the swimming pool, and somebody fell into it.
The last word, the risk involved, and they own that risk. The last, uh, all proposed changes to the landscape of the site, at the very last word is structures. Am I reading that as including taking a building and changing that with putting the cells on top?
Well, that means they're gonna have to show.
That means they might add a, they're adding a building, in other words.
Adding a building?
Adding a
Okay.
battery building or something, or control Italian structure.
Well, do you wanna s- do you wanna say all proposed changes to the landscape of, to the landscape of the site? Or the building itself?
Oh, okay, we're we're off the fence right now, so to speak.
Well.
Well, fencing is in that paragraph, that that sentence, rather.
Is that good enough, or? Because it it looks as though they don't need a fence if they have plantings. But Tilly, you seem to have a safety concern about um, the need for a fence.
For the ground-mounted solar, I do.
Uh-huh.
I think that, I think that's, that's basically, you know, where you would put a fence, I think.
And this calls for that clearly, I think.
It doesn't really say ground-mounted, does it?
It says all proposed changes to the landscape of the site, so you do anything to the landscape, that's a change. You mount something on the ground, that's a change.
But if you mount something on the roof, it's not a change to the landscape?
To the landscape.
Right. May may I suggest that if 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 that really, if security is a concern, um, that we're in the right place, we're in the design standards, and the easiest, clearest way to make sure that the permanent authority uh pays some attention towards the fact that fencing may very well be needed for security purposes. That's why, why wouldn't we, uh, just as this is two, three is signage, add a four and make it very easy and um site security shall be reviewed, which may include fencing. Something to that effect, something very simple, very plain, very clear.
Well, that's, I think I wrote something simple, ground-mounted solar photovoltaic facility shall install eight-feet-high fencing around the facility for security purposes. That's all.
As long as that could be waived, I wouldn't have a problem with it in the right.
Well, every, almost everything.
I I think eight, an eight-foot, eight-foot fence is very aggressive. And.
What does a pool require? Six?
Six, yeah.
I do not know.
I do not.
Either one is equally dangerous.
I do not know.
Make it six feet?
Well, eight foot is.
Alright, I don't.
Do we really wanna put a number on it? Do we wanna?
Four, I think, I I agree with you, Harry, put four, and then fence.
Can I offer an edit, just an edit?
Yeah, yeah.
Alright. Couldn't you just say all proposed veget- vegetative screening, sorry, and then do comma fencing, comma planting, exterior lighting and structures, and then it's not so vague as if it's screening or fencing or planting. It's saying we have the authority to cover all these items.
Where are you?
Uh, A, at the top.
So s- so how would that read again?
So all proposed changes to the landscape of the site, including temporary or permanent roads or driveways, grading, area of vegeta- ve- vegetative clearing, all proposed vegetative screening, fencing, planting, exterior lighting and structures.
Yeah, I I doubt, I immediately say, yeah, you don't need and/or.
Right, and then it's definite that you have the authority to oversee fencing.
Well, all of those things.
Yeah.
I definitely agree with the and/or, that's, those are always, yeah, I.
And I I disagree.
Yeah?
Because that, and and I I like where, I like where you're going with that, but I disagree because uh it's, before that, the heading is landscaping. Okay, we're under two, landscaping, and it says applicant shall submit a landscape plan detailing the following, and it says all proposed changes. If they don't propose the fence, then there is no fence, and where does the review?
No, no, all proposed changes to the landscape, including if they make any changes.
I would say.
If they don't include.
Right, including temporary or permanent roads or driveways, grading, area of vegetative clearing, all proposed vegetative clearing, uh, eh, fencing, planting, exterior lighting and structures.
Right.
But if they don't propose to have a fence, then they don't have to show it.
But we can still require it.
Am I reading that right?
We can write all proposed or required changes, something like that, 'cause I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
Or required by the planning board.
Well, we're s- we're saying, um, I still think we add it just, if if fencing is something that the board feels strongly about, then just add a four at the end of it. We have one is lighting, two is landscaping, three is signage, maybe we could put um four, security.
Did you say something like, because that's about what they have to submit, but that with some applications I I see where it says the planning board has the right to ask for m- more information or consultants, that sort of thing. So something to cover saying that they have to submit the plan with all these proposed changes, but the planning board can make requirements with those same items as well?
Can it have conditions, you mean?
Conditions or.
Yeah.
Well, isn't that in design standards?
I don't think we have that.
In other words, I'm in design standards.
We don't have that phrase in here yet.
I'm telling them, there are the standards you need to go by.
Right, but like you said, they may not propose changes.
Right, they're not gonna propose a fence.
Right.
Unless, for whatever reason.
You make it a requirement, so that's why I was just wondering.
Well, if if we're serious about making it a requirement, I I think we should be pretty plain about it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's why I say add a, add, you know, you're talking about lighting, talking about landscaping, talking about signage. If you're concerned about security, and that was where you were before, right, with security, Tilly?
Yeah.
Then let's add a security and um fencing, the the applicant.
Lighting.
Lighting?
Security.
Oh, okay, well, lighting and security sometime go together. Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
We're going crazy on this already, we're only halfway through.
Well. Well, the standards for lighting are explained, the standards for landscaping.
Are explained.
Um, the standards.
You don't care for the, my sentence, the solar energy facility?
Um.
One sentence under fence? Is that, is that?
Well.
No, no, the ground-mounted solar facility shall install eight feet, or six feet high?
Well, we gotta, we have to add a, are we adding a four? Are we all together on that?
I thought you said that, just now, four.
Well, I don't know if we have any consensus for that, though. I'm not feeling the consensus.
I'm I'm good with it. I'm I'm, there are a number of different approaches, but there, a lot of these are di- differences or distinctions without a substantial difference. You know, I think that what we're saying is that we we wanna make sure that um there are, there's screening, security, there's something that's gonna really discourage people from.
I see screening as very distinct from an eight-foot fence. Screening is visual, an eight-foot fence is security.
Well, I kinda think.
Fine.
I agree with Tim about the pool.
They can have the same function. Let's just take screening out of it, just say um security fencing.
Alright.
And and make that number four.
The applicant shall demonstrate adequate security fencing if the PGA determines that it is necessary?
Bingo.
Adequate security.
Yep.
That's fine.
Hold on.
That's fine.
That is good, Harry. Say it again.
Oh, God, put it back.
Adequate.
The applicant shall provide.
The applicant.
The applicant shall provide
internal tools on.
Adequate fencing if the PGA. I forget what I said. Requests. Shall de- the applicant shall demonstrate adequate security fencing.
Shall demonstrate, or how about install?
No, we're not installing it.
No, they should. The applicant shall install adequate security fencing if the PGA requires.
Yeah, is that what you wanted, Tilly?
No, I wanted it just for the ground. The, if it's on the roof, I don't think it fits.
Well, then we don't, then we don't call for it.
Just the gr- oh, just leave it uh open? Okay.
Can you, can you read that back?
Yeah, I hope you can, 'cause I don't remember what I said.
Uh, the applicant shall install adequate security fencing if the PGA requires, you guys think of a word?
Deems necessary?
Deems necessary, thanks.
Upon request or somewhere, yeah, deems necessary.
Okay. And that's under a section four?
Applicant shall demo- demonstrate adequate security fencing, right? Is that something we were saying?
Install, not demonstrate, they they, they'll be required to install adequate security fencing.
Show it demonstrate in the site plan approval, right?
Yeah.
And be required to install, I like that too, right?
Alright, shall demonstrate.
I really think we're, we're, I really think we're nitpicking.
Are we beating the haws?
I I I really think we are.
That's okay, they would just write demonstrate and install adequate security fencing if the PGA deems necessary.
I think the fencing is reasonable to add to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, fencing is fine to add to it.
Something to look at, a reminder that we should look at something like that. Good catch, Tilly.
Me too.
Alright.
Okay.
Going back to that general provisions.
Mm-hmm.
That sort of is like a a heading for what's to follow.
Mm-hmm.
I I don't need it, I mean, I think that's basic. Writing, you would say general provision, provision section, and then A and, you know, A through H, A through I. I don't think we need to add, like, turn that into a separate A and then bump them all up, I think.
No, that's not, that that is a heading, I'm not saying that, but the sentence under it miss, is not labeled.
They said to put A, application for a solar energy facility, there was an A missing.
It's just the the general provisions.
In other words, that's gonna get.
It's it's incongruous with the structure of the rest of it, but the the general provisions are not all about the application for a solar energy facility.
That becomes A.
Okay.
And on page two.
So general provisions is the, is the, is the heading.
It is the heading.
And all the, everything below is, you just considered one of the general conditions. It's kinda like, look at the top of the page, one, six, five, one thirty-five, one, six, five, one thirty-six, one, six, five, one thirty-seven.
I like it.
Okay.
Consistent.
Next, Tilly?
Okay, um. A one, six, five, one forty, um.
I'm just stay with Tilly, so we can.
This is, this.
Site plan approval, criteria and procedures?
This applies to the ground-mounted, and and we have a day, uh, open solar energy facility application. We don't say anywhere in here that this is just requirements for the ground-mounted one.
So you're talking to site plan approval criteria?
Yeah, are we up up there yet, at one forty? Okay.
And you're saying what?
I'm saying that these requirements are strictly for the uh ground-mounted facility, not any, all of the cell, uh, solar energy facilities.
Why is that?
Well, if you read it, they're cutting trees.
Minimizing obstruction of scenic views. You're not not gonna be putting something on your roof that's gonna cut your neighbor's view off or the view from the park.
Uh.
I don't know where in town that would be relevant, but.
And number five minimizes glare from headlights and lighting and reflection from our photovoltaic panels.
Sure.
Yeah. Are are you saying, Tilly, that it it only applies to?
The ground mounted.
You're saying it should only apply to the ground.
No, it, I'm saying that it does.
You're saying the way it's written.
Yeah, the way it's set up, I I think it's just for that.
What about that, number six, though?
Yeah, I think number six also would apply to.
But isn't solar energy facility as a title both?
It's generic.
Generic, and it covers your onsite and your commercial.
And again, I don't see that there's a downside.
So by using that, you're using, it covers both conditions, so I would.
So by using that, you're using, it covers both conditions, so I would say it does cover them both, Tilly.
Well, provides adequate storm water management, why would that be any concern if it's on the roof? Minimize the volume of cut and trees, why would you be concerned about that if it was on your roof?
Then we don't.
They may not apply.
Not applicable, not applicable.
Obstructing of scenic views, you mean, you can't, you want to just see the sky, what would it do if it was on your roof?
Hmm.
Um, maximum pedestrian and vehicle safety, if it's on your roof?
Well, those, those are things.
But so, 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 so instead of focusing on it that way, nothing, what's going to happen to the process if it stays just the way it's written? What's going to happen?
What's the downside?
There's no downside.
The applicant's going to come in and say.
It's just, it's just that.
We need these criteria.
That I don't want to see town council say, we got too much in here again. We've got a lot here, there's seven pages, I think that's.
Well, what, what, what my, what my concern is, is that, and, and I, I wasn't part of writing this, so, you know, you got to take what I'm saying with a grain of salt, but what I'm hearing is, is that we're going from crossing Ts and dotting Is to, to starting to get into substantial changes. And you guys can do that if you want, but I, I, you're going to, you're going to lose your schedule, you're going to, you're going to waste a lot of time. Yeah, I'd like to keep that in. I think on this one, I think it, it works.
Yeah.
It's up to you guys, it's up to you.
And I think you're, it's not, you, you have a good point, Tilly, I mean, uh.
I, I don't want to see town council, this is the second time going around.
But the thing is, if town council says, oh, it's too long, we can say thank you for your opinion, this is the. Well, I don't think.
You're going to go with it anyway?
It's okay. Town, town council's not going to reject it because it's too long, town council will reject it because it's contradictory, it's.
Duplication, I think it was one of the things he stressed.
Is this not their rewrite?
Probably, I think they've had input, yeah. I think we already vetted it through once.
From a meeting minutes or something that Howard was going to incorporate the town council's, uh, suggestions as well as the boards and what came out of the town, last town meeting.
Here's, here's the town council letter, yeah.
And he's chopped a great deal out of it.
Yeah.
A great deal of the redundancy was, was removed.
It's only seven pages.
Yeah.
That's not very long.
Not for a whole solar.
He's saying altogether that, um, one forty, one, six, five dash one forty, he's saying in his response to KMPA, saying that an applicant who was required to show there's a proposed site for a solar facility use is quote, "an appropriate location for such a use," so.
Well, we're, I'm not reading that, Tilly, which one is it?
This is the town council's letter that he got, um, January thirteenth. Um, so what he's saying about what we just.
Of twenty fourteen.
Huh?
Of twenty fourteen.
Twenty fifteen.
Fifteen?
Yeah. Uh, I know that, uh, let me repeat this. I know that solar facilities are proposed to be allowed by right in all districts, however, in section one, six, five dash one forty A, ten.
Yeah, see, that's been cut out.
Ten's gone.
He cut that out.
Oh, I still have it.
Not in what we were given.
Not in your packet from tonight, you're just reading from the old version that you made the notes on.
Oh, my God.
I got this off of the computer from what he sent us.
When?
What did you get, something different today?
What's in, what, what, these are in the packet, in the planning packet.
In the packet that I gave you guys tonight?
Yeah.
This is different.
This is what, um, can I see this?
I think what's in.
That might have been, that might have been the copy from.
The supplemental is the same as what was emailed out.
Okay. That's what I, that's why I got it, I printed that myself.
They should be, they should be the same.
And this is, I think the date is on it, February fifth, twenty fifteen?
All right.
Because this one has a, it's only two, seven, two.
Oh, really? So we've got a different set of.
I'm, I'm looking at the.
The one that came there.
This one. Which is, um, February fifth, two thousand fifteen.
And that's what I have on here.
Two forty, two forty D N?
I have that, um, that's the date, because I printed it from the computer.
And you're seeing it in section ten?
That's what he saw.
Well, that, no, that's what he saw, because he was responding to an old one a long time ago and ten is now gone.
But, remember, Tilly?
He's referring to a long time ago, to the previous draft, this is draft was made up and is incorporated.
In response to that.
Howard, Howard addressed all of those concerns town council had.
Okay.
And the result is this version that we have in front of us, if I'm understanding it correctly, is that right?
That's how I understand it.
I think we're almost there, I think we are. And it's only twenty minutes past eight, so I mean, I think we can rock and roll here.
Good, let's get it over with. Is this yours or mine now?
Yours.
All right, so, okay, then I have, um, one, six, five dash forty-one A.
Is it page number, one, six, five dash one forty-one?
No, forty-one A.
Yeah, one forty-one, page five of seven.
I'd like to ask a question about page four, in the middle bit, under, uh, ten, paragraph ten.
Yeah.
Um, on the very far right side, it says, the script, and down below.
And operate.
Yeah.
Some kind of strays.
Okay, but that's all that is, it's just strays, all right. Okay, page five of seven, one, sixty-five, one forty-one A.
All right, we, I'm sorry, I went one forty A.
One forty A.
That was the one we just did, I don't, that was the, that was the one.
Oh, okay.
Criteria.
We're still in criteria?
Okay, what I wanted to add in there for, uh, different districts, uh, let me see where it is, add two.
Under storm water management?
Criteria. What I wanted to add was, I don't know if that's the right one now, looking at it now, but what I had was that this oughta, ought to be, um, somewhere it says that we pay attention to existing bylaws, is that in this section?
Are you reading town council's comments?
No, I'm reading the bylaw, somewhere in there, does it say that we address the underlying districts?
I have yet to see that.
Oh, we haven't written that, we haven't put that in there?
I don't see it. I don't see that in this, in this version, I cannot find that.
How come we don't have that, I mean, why was that out?
That would be, because that would be something we'd do, wouldn't we do that in a use table? Yeah, it would be the u- use regulations, right?
Would that be covered under, uh, on page, uh, two, uh, B, compliance with zoning laws ordinances and regulations?
That's the general.
Yeah, I mean, you can cherry pick one, one thing, but, um, if we're in compliance with zoning laws, I would guess that has to do with what districts we're in.
Absolutely.
So.
That's right, that, that's the one, the construction and operation of all solar energy facilities shall be consistent with all applicable local, state and federal requirements, including but not limited to all applicable safety, construction, electrical and communications requirements. Well, I thought in there.
In state building code.
With all applicable local, state and federal requirements, so the local, I think, should be, um.
But saying all means it's not restricted to any particular local, and there are no locals that are cut out.
Yeah.
All local ordinances.
But it doesn't say that, see, it's missing, I think, the bylaws, it should be local bylaws, state and federal requirements.
Local requirements are local bylaws.
Yeah, but it doesn't even, well, yeah, it does all, I think that's two.
And it's also local regulations when it comes to the plumbing code.
And it's a local requirement.
And the electrical code.
You can't do anything, we, we can't approve anything.
Board of Health.
Against the bylaws, etc., etc.
No, I'm going to, I think it should be more, um.
You want to see the bylaw mentioned in there?
I want to see zoning in there.
It's, it's in the title, compliance with zoning laws, ordinances and regulations. I think it's pretty clear what the intent of that is.
Does anybody else have a doubt?
I, I think it's.
You feel good about that one?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Well, my, my concern was, uh, when I was looking through this and, was that the groundwater protection districts should be protected. That's what I was looking for, that it would be exi- it would, would not be allowed in the groundwater protection districts.
Why?
And that's, that's because it could change what water goes into the ground, if you're going to be doing substantial, I think, I don't have one, but I'm thinking what I've read is that the, the, um, uh, that it goes over the ground and you, when you do that, what's underneath that ground could be for groundwater protection.
Doesn't work it.
And you want the rain to come down.
Isn't that one of the thing, one of the components of site plan approval?
Well, does that get picked up in, in, on page six? We picked that up on page six, don't we?
Okay, let me find it, show me.
Page six, um, there is a, a section E, and again, this is, this is all under, um, development and performance standards.
Okay, that mentions the year's removal.
Yeah, and chapter fifty-seven, erosion and storm water control.
Okay, but this is, what I'm talking about is groundwater protection district.
As opposed to storm runoff type?
Yeah, I'm, uh, that's what I'm thinking.
The groundwater protection district is an overlay district, and forgive me, we're the ones that do the special permits for, in that district?
No.
No, we don't.
The ZBA does, because I al- I always forget, I always mix up the watershed protection district and the groundwater protection district.
I'm not sure what harm that does in terms of recharging water, I mean, if you, it's not like you're going to pave a big area and mount this solo, solar voltaic.
I know there's a, there's a suit going on in Newport and, and if you want to believe what you read in the paper, that was a big issue for them, they're still in court over that, because, uh, like a farm was being installed on, on, uh.
Well, that was Kobe, that was on, off of Scotland Road.
Right, that's the same, but it was because.
That was a weapon, that was a water recharge.
Okay, can we bring it, let's bring that conversation back to this, I mean.
Yeah, but it wasn't.
Sure.
It was a critical area, sensitive area.
No, it was a scenic area, is how the select would be.
Oh, they thought it was scenic?
Yeah.
Well, the people that were.
That's okay, let's, let's, let's bring it back to this.
Well, that's why I thought it should be in there. We should, we should do everything possible to protect our groundwater, and if this, you know, if this is going into that district, I have a problem with that. I can't give you all the scientific information about it, but I think we should be restricting it.
Um, what you're saying that it, we, we shouldn't allow it in the groundwater protection district?
What table is the chart on? What page is that chart on?
Oh, it's not.
And that's in, that's in zone one and zone two and protecting our well water.
I'm not sure how that would affect the harm.
Well, may, may I make a suggestion? Um, and back in, back in page three, you have, um, under site plan approval criteria and procedure, you have submission requirements and required documents, right, that's B. Everybody with me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and we have one, two, three, four, five, six, um, we go right down to eight with the designation of, um, estimated habitats of rare wildlife and national heritage priority habitats of rare species zones, if applicable. Perhaps we should have the applicant show us as part of site plan review? If this is in, what were you saying, the watershed protection district or the storm water?
Groundwater.
The groundwater protection district.
Right.
Could we add that on to number eight?
Just to show it to us?
Yes, because then if they show it to us, then we can ensure.
Well, don't, don't they have to show all zones, don't they have to show all of that on the site plan submittal?
Like, the building inspector would boot that to the ZBA.
Is that the one the ZBA does, or is the groundwater the one we do?
No.
Which is the one we do?
ZBA, if we don't do that.
Which is the one we do, because there's two.
Then we should.
One's watershed protection district, one's groundwater protection district.
I mean, we should.
I've never been able to keep the two of them straight myself.
I mean.
Never.
When someone, when someone puts together a site plan.
Mm-hmm.
They show the zones, you know, they show the abutting zones, they show the property lines, they show the, you know, districts, all the various districts, and that would automatically would be incorporated, it, they, they would think.
Okay.
But, you know, to move this thing along, it's not going to hurt to make another number like you were, I think that's where you're going.
I'm not even talking about adding another number, I'm just saying, in number eight.
Yeah.
They're, 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 they're being, they're being, add, they're being asked to show the designation of priority habitats?
Yeah, we're, we're the planning board under that, according to what I have.
Right.
The groundwater is a special permit by the planning board.
Okay, so, once they show the estimated habitats of rare wildlife, and they show the priority habitats of rare species, if applicable, um, they can also show, maybe just throw a semicolon, um, groundwater protection district zones. How's that?
Yeah, I, I, I would just.
That good, Tilly?
Yeah.
Designation of NHESP, estimated habitats of rare wildlife.
Mm-hmm.
And New Hampshire priority habitats of rare species zones.
Natural heritage.
And, um.
Not New Hampshire, natural heritage.
Groundwater protection district.
And the groundwater protection district.
If applicable.
And have it end with if applicable.
I like that, good catch, Tilly, as always. Are there any other overlays?
Where, where did you put it now, I'm looking.
It's under number eight on page four of seven.
Yeah, flood zone, flood plain, what about flood plain? Want to call a flood plain too, good point.
See, the fact that, I just, the fact that we're starting to call these individual things out tells me that there's something. You shouldn't be calling out all these individual pieces like this, they, they should be, there, there's usually standard language that incorporates.
Incorporated by reference, I, I get it. Sometimes we aren't.
We got all kinds of stuff.
Right?
When we went, we, you want to talk about language?
No, no.
I think we had almost too much.
I think we wrapped it, there, didn't we, didn't we wrap that just now?
I think that, I think you did, I think you did.
Good hit.
So you got the.
Where did you put it though, did you repeat that for me?
Number eight, it's going to say designation of NHESP, estimated habitats of rare wildlife, you there? From page fi- four of seven.
Four of seven, okay.
I see NH too much.
Yeah, yeah.
Number eight, all right, and it's going to say, wildlife comma, and NH priority habitats of rare species zones and groundwater protection district if applicable.
Now, one question about listing them, calling them out specifically, is that it implies that those are the only ones that they have to do.
No.
But it, it implies that.
Oh, okay.
You know, and so, I'm, I, I.
Are we covered?
I like a lot of the including but not limited to kind of. That is, I, I couldn't agree more.
And that's why criteria, that very first sentence in criteria, is in review and evaluation of a solar energy facility application, and in making written final determination, the PGA shall consider but not be limited to the following. And that's why we put it there, right?
Yeah.
So it's a catch-all, if we miss anything, we can certainly ask for it, right?
I will say this, though, Harry, that the fact that you have a B, submission requirements and required documents, takes this paragraph and legally separates it from A in a certain way that you can't necessarily.
Right.
Incorporate, uh, but not be limited to the following, to everything under B. Um, if you wanted to just add that same thing, and if you wanted to just take and make it, the PGA is considering, you could add, uh, the following requested information is supplemental to the site plan, the following simple, following requested information, uh, but not limited to the following supplemental to the site plan requirements, I mean, you can plug that in there, in that sentence somewhere, I did not plug it in the right sentence, spot.
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a safety.
All the requested information is supplemental, following.
Did we finish it?
And then, but not limited to the following to this, this should go after supplemental, Rob, you think?
Supplemental to the site plan requirements.
Supplemental information.
Now, it's the following.
Supplemental but not limited to...
To, because like Rob said, what, site plan approval, all those requirements that those things are shown in is being incorporated by reference here.
Right. Right, we should repeat it again so it's not cut off.
Information including in the site plan requirements uh, shall include but not be limited to the following.
Say that again.
Shall also include but not be limited to the following. Right after eighty-three.
I think that's it.
Shall also include but not be limited to the following.
Information required for the site plan shall include but not be...
Alright, so somebody read it again.
Afterword says eighty-three.
Yeah. Right there, okay?
Shall not be limited to, uh, I lost it.
Information required for the site plan.
Gotta get a tape recorder.
Information required for the site plan shall include but not be limited to the following.
So you're saying put it at the beginning?
Put it, put it at the beginning and says all of these.
Okay, information required by the site plan.
For, yeah.
For the site plan.
Yeah. Shall include but not be limited to the following.
Whoa, wait a minute, you just took out all the requirements of section eighty-three?
What is section eighty-three?
Section eighty-three is site plan. Section eighty-three is a whole nother thing that deals with site plan exclusively in our bylaw.
No, it's, it's, he's, I...
Right?
I think after the word requirements, it would read shall include but not be limited to section one sixty-five eighty-three.
And the following, oh, okay, because it says the following requested information.
Bingo, bingo.
Okay.
Following requested information is supplemental to the site plan requirements
Section?
and shall include but not be limited to section one sixty-five dash eighty-three.
But not be limited to the follow...
Section one sixty-five eighty-three. The following stays in the beginning, the following requested information is supplemental to the site plan requirements.
Section one sixty-five eighty-three.
Well, and shall, right there, after requirements.
After requirements is where it would say.
They say and shall include.
And shall include but not be limited to section one sixty-five eighty-three. The following requested information is supplemental to the site plan requirements and shall include but not be limited to section one sixty-five eighty-three.
You go, Rob.
Okay.
Okay.
Where were you?
I don't know, Tilly had more?
Forrest, you guys are on, on page five.
We're on page...
Page nine of seven, I'm ready.
Nine of seven?
Tilly did hers, thanks, Tilly. Anybody on that side of me?
Uh, the only thing I want to compete at is on page five, and dimension, it's one sixty-five, one forty-one, uh, under performance standards, A, dimension and density requirements, purposes setbacks to mitigate adverse impacts on abutting properties for a solar energy facility, compliance with front, side, rear setbacks shall be as follows. God bless you.
Thank you.
Front yard shall have a depth of at least twenty feet, is that adequate? Is that what we're looking for, twenty feet? Because remember, like something Tilly was looking for there before,
Yeah.
Tilly was looking for a section that basically said the setbacks had to fit with the setbacks of the zoning district that you were in. That's gone now.
How did it go?
With this paragraph?
Oh, with this?
How it highlighted it and it said cut, and then it went. Okay?
Okay.
Because there was a little bit of a conflict, and I think town council pointed that out. So, I, I believe, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this dimension and density requirements and these setbacks are the only setbacks that are gonna apply to this. No. Okay? So, these better be adequate. And I look at it as though, make them big, this is my personal thing, make them big setbacks, and then waive them smaller. That's just the way I look at it. That's just me.
Yeah, but then a lot of, a lot of people may not even wanna apply for it because...
It would discourage people, yeah, oh, well.
Well, they can ask for a waiver.
Well, so let's just, let's just talk a little bit, let's just talk a little bit about that, um, so specific to the front yard setback, which is the part of the project that the general public will perceive the most, except for abutters.
In theory.
Yep.
In theory. Do you all feel that twenty feet is enough from the property line? To me, it seems a little short.
I, I think it's a little bit short, I, I think, um, fifty feet setback. But as far as...
Why?
The fifty feet setback, um, there again, I think...
You're talking about just the front rod, front yard right now, focusing on the front yard?
Because the house is already built, and so what are you, you know, if somebody wants to put it on the roof, I think the fifty foot setback would be for the ground again. I'm more concerned with the ground than I am the roofs to, to have some clarity on, and requirements for the ground rather than...
I would suspect that if it was a roof mounted, and the building was thirty feet off, and we had a setback of fifty, we'd waive it.
Well, then, okay, then put in fifty, and then you can waive it.
I think Tim's perspective is, on that is that it is reasonable that it's, it's discouraging.
People don't wanna have to invest a lot of time and money
Waiver, oh.
Apply for permits, hire an engineer, and then hope to get a waiver.
Well, they have to hire an engineer, one way or the other, I mean, you're not gonna...
But if you're, if you're saying they have to be fifty feet, and they're going, oh, well, we can just go for a waiver, I wouldn't think most people are gonna wanna
It's a crapshoot.
venture that money into it.
If they don't have the area to absorb thirty feet, should they be there?
Well, what's the matter with, I mean, yeah, but if...
You just said thirty, not fifty.
Right, because we're saying twenty here.
Yes, thirty's a cover one.
No, fifty minus thirty, twenty is thirty feet that they would need.
Thirty foot difference.
Yeah, it's thirty foot difference.
So the Dunk Donuts couldn't put a, you know, or, or that block couldn't, couldn't do this. Because they don't, or, or downtown. Nobody downtown could, could do this because they wouldn't have a twenty foot setback, let alone a fifty foot setback.
Well, one of the things in keeping with this discussion of twenty feet or fifty feet or something else in between, B and C, at, at least they have a consistency to them which A does not, which ref, which references if you're in a residential district, your setback becomes fifty. And it seems odd to me that if you're in a residential district in the front yard, you wouldn't have the same thing. And I'm not saying that's right or wrong, I'm just saying that there's an, it seems like there's an inconsistency there where the side and rear yards, you've gone to the effort of recognizing a residential neighborhood.
Yes, but we've gotta figure the front yard then has the width of the street plus the width of the lot on the other side to provide buffer.
I, I, I understand what you're saying.
That's why the front was...
Is that, but the street doesn't provide any buffer per se, but...
Well, but there's no one in the street that's that close. I'm, I'm just saying the nearest neighbor from the front yard is the person across the street, which is at least twenty feet away from the middle of the street.
And the snowbanks and the snow...
Yeah, loud, I mean, the block, it'd be pretty effective.
No, I, I think, I think we kinda, I remember that twenty feet from the front was because of the fact that there's additional clearance to the nearest neighbor, neighbor's property.
And it, it's funny because, and again, I wasn't part of the discussion, but for, for just that reason, setbacks are, for just the reasons you're talking about, those setbacks in the front are usually greater because you can't buffer a street, and people drive on the streets, and it's not about the person who's on the property on the other street, it's about the general public driving on a street which has no buffer at all. So, it's, in that regard, you typically are looking for a, a, a bigger buffer.
Yeah, but we, we can require that they have, uh, shrubs or some sort of, um, plantings. I don't think anybody's gonna, I don't think someone's gonna put a big ugly six or eight foot high chain link fence in their front yard anyway, I don't think that's where you're gonna see solar.
Well, the front for the RAs is...
Right, but you, you could potentially have a, a solar panel and a, and a very large metal structure right where that column is. While you're on the sidewalk here, that's twenty feet away, that column right there is twenty feet away.
Yeah.
So, you could have a very large structure right there as you're walking by.
I don't think anybody would.
I would use, I would use the same language, I would use the same language you have in your side yard and rear yard.
Yeah, the intensity of you.
That if, if, if you were then in a, in a residential neighborhood, that fifty foot setback, to me, would seem to make sense.
So in other words, what you're suggesting if I'm seeing it, um...
Front yard shall have a depth...
Provided, after the, after the, the line from the property line in A,
Yeah.
you would add
however...
provided however where the locus abuts a conservation use, recreational use, or residential district, the side yar, the
Front yard.
The front yard shall not be less than fifty feet.
Yeah.
Okay? And then it would essentially be the same for the side yard, and the same for the rear yard, or similar.
Yeah.
And number two there covers us because the PGA may grant a waiver from the setback requirements if the applicant can demonstrate, if failing to do so would render the sighting of the facility unfeasible. Okay, so, there you go, I mean, if they have a hardship and they can only make forty feet, then the waiver won't impede access or egress for maintenance personnel, and the waiver will not...
Yeah, I know, I, I, Rob, Rob's point was well taken, that there is, a road doesn't provide any buffer. It's just, so I, I never really thought of it that way, I don't remember, we, we fought about that front yard for a while. There was a reason that was different, and honestly, I don't remember.
I'd actually add a, a, a D, a letter D to number two there, and say, um, that the PGA may grant a waiver for setback requirements if the applicant can demonstrate adequate visual screening.
I, I don't think it's, I don't think that's necessary.
I think we could just do it.
I don't think it's necessary, if they wanna file a waiver, they're gonna have to convince you why a waiver's necessary. They had, they just have to...
I understand what you're saying, but to plant the idea that that might be something that we would look at, because in my opinion, if, if it was adequately screened, I could see a twenty foot. If that was all hedges or something.
Yeah, I, I think as an applicant, you just already know it, you, you know that if you're gonna go after a waiver, you have to come up with a good reason why it's...
Yeah.
I haven't actually seen any residential ground mounted solar facilities anyway, anywhere. You see them in industrial areas.
See a lot of them industrial.
I've never seen one in.
They're expensive right now, and I mean, you have to have a, a, a lengthy buyback.
But this is a solar energy facility, what's written, it's not specifically just ground.
And I, I, I think that we're gonna see big changes in the next ten years, when it comes to photovoltaics.
So we could really consolidate the writing of that, just say front, side, and rear yard setbacks fifty feet. Shall be at least fifty feet, we could consolidate this, all this writing. Front, side, and rear yards shall be fifty feet setbacks.
Um, no, twenty feet from the property unless...
Are we keeping twenty for anyone?
I would leave them separated, in case, um, at town meeting someone wanted to separate them out.
I think you should all just have the same wording.
Exactly, with, you know, the appropriate plugin for side, for front, for rear, right?
Yep.
So all, instead of what we leave twenty, it'll be fifty.
What are you seeing?
It'll still say twenty.
They'll all say each side yard, each, each something yard shall have a depth of at least twenty feet from the property line, provided however where the locus abuts a conservation use, recreation use, or residential use, the side yard shall not be less than fifty. And they'll, all three will say the same thing, but it'll be front, side, and rear. What, what is meant by locus?
That's, that's the...
That's a tree.
The whole property in its entirety.
The engineering term, isn't it locus, that they always put on as locus point?
Well, locus, a locat, right, so that, that's a locus map, but the word locus typically wouldn't be used like this, um...
Locus is a point, isn't it?
I would, I would call it where the site.
Ooh, so in other words...
Where the site abuts a conservation, where the, where the...
Or any side of...
Or, or the other word that you see is where the project abuts a conservation use, where the project...
Project sounds good, I think.
Yeah, I like that.
Are you looking for any, uh, where the project?
Project abuts, project's good, project's a good one. Locuses are like a locus map, it's different.
So it'll be changed in all three?
I, I'm not sure that I, I go for that, because if I have a piece of property and I've got a house here, and my solar arrays are gonna be here, this is my project, this is my house, and here's the conservation land. This isn't the project. This is the project. This is not a abutting, I like site.
Site or parcel.
The site, whatever's being covered in the site plan.
That's fine too.
Yeah.
That's fine too.
You could say parcel.
Parcel's what the assessors do, they have abutting parcels.
Yeah, you could say parcel.
Well, the project prefers specifically to where the
Right.
where the thing is located, right?
Yeah. The project is the site there, you typically thought of as one and the same. You, the site is fine, the site plan, where the site plan abuts.
It's more definitive than locus.
Either way, we're getting closer.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm liking parcel. I'm liking parcel.
But it's not the parcel.
It's the parcel.
Depends where you are on the parcel, with the solar array.
Where the parcel abuts a conservation use. Where the parcel abuts a conservation use.
So, so if...
A recreation use.
If this is the parcel...
Yep, that's my parcel.
And here's the project, and here's my house.
Right.
And here's the conservation land.
Doesn't abut.
It doesn't abut, the project doesn't...
Where you have a house there, you're in a residential district, there's a house here, and you need that fifty foot setback.
From the, oh, and that's the change here.
Because it captures conservation use, a recreational use, or a residential district.
What if there's nobody there?
There's nobody there, or is it, is it a residential district with a, with a parcel that's undeveloped?
What if it's conservation?
Then you gotta do it.
I mean, you've used site plan, you've used site plan throughout the, the whole...
Across the street.
It's across the street, and it doesn't abut it.
That's what I'm saying. It's exactly what I'm saying, the street here is conservation.
Why don't we do, why don't we let Howard decide site or parcel? Cause he'll know the correct terminology, instead of you guys going...
I'm good with letting town council decide too.
Alright, so we'll just say, get rid of locus.
Get rid of locus, and then, uh, the words to pick from are site or pro, or parcel.
Or project even.
Or project, site, parcel, or project. He'll probably say any of the three.
Site, or project.
There.
Okay.
Okay.
Next. I, I have a, actually I have a question about the setbacks as they're defined in one sixty-five eighty-three, in, in, in our well, in our, no, it's not in this, that's, that's...
Oh, in site plan review.
In the site plan.
Eighty-three is site plan review.
Right. I, is it in that section where setbacks are defined?
No setbacks are in use table, right? Setbacks are in the use table.
Well, what, what I'm, what I'm wondering is how does how...
This is where site plan approval, one sixty-five eighty-three, this is where to show in your application, you have to show your water resources, the projected adequate parking.
Right, I'm asking about the setbacks, and that's in a different section.
Yes, setbacks are...
Use table.
Use table.
So, so my, my question is, are, are the setbacks that we generally work against, work from, are they substantially different from this?
Yeah.
Uh, I'm not sure.
I, I, I only am wondering because the idea of building something on top of an existing set of regulations or, or rules, um, adds complexity, and if it's not necessary...
Residential A, front yard setbacks twenty feet, residential B it's thirty.
Now, these are for houses and residences.
Residential A, residential B.
Right.
Commercial A, zero.
Mm-hmm.
Zero setback. Commercial B, twenty foot setback, commercial C, fifty. Industrial A, twenty. Industrial B, fifty, industri, uh, residential C, fifty.
This would include any pertinent structures, any, anything that anybody builds?
Anything you build, yeah. That's your s- buil- building envelope setback.
This goes back to what Tilly was suggesting earlier about keying this to districts.
Mm-hmm.
And would it not make sense to just key it to these regulations? And. The the concern I have is if somebody is in a district where the buildings are right next to each other.
Mm-hmm.
They. It going by this, they can't put anything on the roof.
No, they can't.
They they demonstrate, that's where our, that's where two comes in, PGA may grant a waiver from setback requirement if the applicant can demonstrate failing to do so would render the sighting unfeasible.
True that.
Waiver would not impede access or egress, waiver wouldn't, would not adversely affect the intent of this bylaw section in terms of development and design standards. So you set the bar here, fully well realizing that. In horrible cases, the bar can be there, the township is protected, but the board. In its judgment and wisdom can decide on something less restrictive.
So how many changes are you taking from the twenty to fifty?
I'm sorry, Tilly.
Clear that up for me, please.
The non.
They're not, so you're gonna leave it just like it is?
The only one that, no, the only one that's changing is A, the front yard, the front yard is going to add to it. However, where the site abuts a conservation use, recreational use, or residential district, the front yard shall not be less than fifty feet. But no numbers are changing, Tilly.
Cause right now, in the commercial A, there is no setback.
I thought.
Zero.
What what other um?
He told me A, he was changing to fifty, right, is that right?
No, we're adding fifty, we're not changing, we're keeping the twenty.
Twenty, you're just adding that sentence.
In the residential.
That phrase, where the locus abuts.
One of these are gonna.
I was gonna bring kisses, but.
Okay.
Cups.
All right, you're just saying for me either.
What what other zones are here?
Chocolate.
Since you're looking at that chart, what other zones are there besides conservation, recreation, and residential?
The groundwater.
Those aren't zones.
The district.
What other district?
Those are parcels, right?
The groundwater is a district.
With the exception of the.
Conservation, recreation, and residential.
Residential districts, residential districts is the RA, RB, and RC.
So those, so those are residential, and then what else?
Yep, there's your setback.
You know, yeah, and then what are the other districts?
These are zoning districts.
Yeah, what are the other ones besides residential?
Commercial A.
Commercial.
Commercial B.
Yeah.
Commercial C.
Yeah.
Industrial A.
Yeah.
Industrial B.
Yeah.
And industrials, and in industrial A and industrial B. There is no I B.
Where I'm where I'm going with this is um, when when this is, when this was put together, um.
This or that?
Yeah, the uh, solar.
Mm-hmm.
You're really, you're really limiting, and maybe this was your intent, um, but you're really taking away the only land that it has any size to it. For someone to come in and do a substantial solar project when you um. You know, say. You have a fifty foot setback from residential um, and conservation and recreation use districts. Because the only other districts that are left open for twenty foot setbacks are commercial and industrial. There's no large parcels of land that are currently zoned commercial and and industrial. The only land that's zoned that has any size to it is the conservation and recreation stuff. So if that's the intent, you know, it 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 it's it's telling a developer that. His project is going to either have fifty foot setbacks if he can find a large piece of land. Which may not be an issue. Or if he finds a s- uh, if he finds a um, piece of land um, that's smaller, that's um, in in um. A commercial zone or an industrial zone. You know.
Then he has a twenty foot setback.
And he has a twenty foot setback and it's a smaller project, so I I'm just, just I'm just pointing that out.
I'm sure we're gonna run into that because wh- what if a, say for instance, a neighborhood got together and said. We could, let's combine our lots and put solar on them. And then we'll all share, we'll all hook up to to use it to our homes in a block, say, let's say, one street or so. Then you would have the dimensions.
They're gonna join their backyards?
Yeah, then you would have the dimensions that that would would coincide with this. No?
I've never considered it, Tilly, I've I've gotta focus on that for a minute, so in other words.
That sounds like waiver material.
Like a trust, we get together. And they would all lease part of their backyards or de-part of their backyards.
They don't have enough for themselves, so they're gonna.
Well, they can write a contract and say, yeah, have this use.
Why not?
I mean, it's it's kinda, it's kinda like the uh, it's kinda like the argument that um, the 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 the.
I'll get it.
The rich people down in Nantucket have used to kibosh the.
Thanks.
Sorry.
You know, they they they.
That wasn't just Nantucket.
Well. I mean, it it was, it was, it was a lot of Nantucket and um, but anyways, you know, the attitude that that. That water, you know, that view belongs to them and it's kind of the same. Situation by including our conservation land and recreation land, um, you know, as having fifty foot setbacks. You know, you're 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 kinda doing the same thing, um.
Maybe it should only apply to residential.
Well, that's kinda where I'm going with it.
Yeah. And it should also really only apply to ground mounted. Photovoltaic systems.
I think most of the bylaws should be ground.
I don't know where I am on that.
But.
Well, because, I mean, you know, with, you see people, you're very, you don't see any, or you don't see too many solar. Projects in town, although there are a few, but I don't think they could be fifty feet away from the property line and have.
Yeah, probably couldn't.
So I think this should be really more specific to ground mounted, at least the this this one setback dimension and density requirements. That should really apply specifically towards ground mounted arrays.
Well, we spoke about that and naturally, if the building's already, uh, ten feet off, so setback of the building of the of the property line. And it's already there in the industrial area or something like that, then of course, the the board is gonna waive it for a roof mount. We're talking about undeveloped land, more or less, that's. They're just gonna take and wipe all the trees. Twenty feet out from the from the street line and.
When I see the picture of this. It doesn't log downtown, right?
The these can be wonderful facilities and but they they do have a visual impact that. I I think this board should be very cognizant of.
Oh, they do.
I think we really should be, and and by being a little proactive, looking for the fifty feet where you're gonna have a lot of people. In a conservation area, in a recreation area, in a residential area, um, that's fine. If uh, if you're in an industrial area and you're looking at buildings that are, have a zero setback from the street anyway, well, you know what? Um. Putting something twenty feet back isn't so bad, that's an improvement in the area.
This is, this picture's in Westford, must have a lot of it in Westford.
Um. You you don't need a lot of room, I mean, you can you can drive right in Newburyport and see some big stuff.
So do we have any, do we have any other issues anybody wanna?
It is, it is funny that we have on page four, section C, a whole section of waivers, that we can waive anything.
Yeah.
And then we have a sec- separate waiver statement.
Mm-hmm.
About the setbacks.
Waiving setbacks because setbacks are zoning.
It's, I mean, it's.
Wanna reiterate it, have no confusion later, that we can, that the PGA can waive that reg because of that. We're referring to this, and this is set.
Dig that, and I'm 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 really, I'm totally with that, I'm with that, no, no, no.
Yeah.
I like it. I I tell you, I work, I work, I work with some pretty heavy duty characters who think things are cool and there's like a bunch of hippie beatness, you know, it's cool, yeah.
Is there any noise with this?
I can dig that.
Did you, do you even call that?
No, no, it's all.
No, no, no noise at all.
It just wind through it, that that kind of stuff.
There's no oo.
No, no, no. I'm.
Ooh.
Keep in mind, when we, when we, when we deal with solar.
It's like putting there noise.
I'm just gonna say, I'm 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 good with these setbacks, um, because. It it kinda states what the intention is, but we can waive that based on circumstances. But I think it does indicate what our intention is.
Any any developer or engineer reading it will see that it was written.
Right.
Okay.
Put that in mind.
Well, let's move on.
I'm good with it.
I think you're done.
Let's keep on talking.
Not trying to jump the gun.
Let's keep on talking.
So I don't, there's no more on that bylaw, as far as I'm aware.
Hopefully, send it.
Okay, so we have uh, new business.
Well, we wanna send this to KMP, right?
No.
This public channel needs to be continued.
Okay.
Um, the only other thing I wanted to mention was um, surety. For removal, where was that?
It's on page seven.
Is that page seven?
Removal requirements.
Yeah, because somebody might come in and once they've written it off.
Throw it away.
Yeah, they abandoned it. Um, that seemed all okay.
A hundred and, is it a hundred and twenty-five percent or something?
Oh, actually, it's on page three, very top, the proponents shall provide a security sufficient to cover the cost of removal for the first ten years.
Okay. Where is that one?
Uh, page three, very, very top.
And did we mention, oh, and financial certainties also.
Financial certi- yeah.
Uh, H, which is gonna be changed to I.
Right.
Right? And we're we're talking about a surety at.
One hundred and twenty-five percent, right?
Oh, yeah, one hundred and twenty-five percent.
And then every five years, they come in to update that, right? Good, that's now going to be J, right?
Yep, that's all set.
So now we need to go to page seven. Because we changed our numbers.
Yeah.
Right, and look at G two.
Seven, yeah.
G two refers to section one thirty-nine I.
Gotcha, sorry.
That's gotta be changed to, okay. Right? Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
If there are no objections, Mr. Chairman, I would like to continue, uh, I would like to make a motion to have Howard. Um.
Yeah.
Effect all changes discussed this evening and agreed to this evening. Right, affect all the changes. Um, create a finished draft. And uh, I would make a motion to continue this hearing to February twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen.
I s- I second that.
So it's been motioned and seconded to um, authorize Howard to make the revisions modified, the revisions as noted. You said something like that, right?
Um, yeah, absolutely, and create a draft for for uh, the continuation on two twenty-five thirteen. Good?
Yep.
Should we send it to KMP now or not?
No, not yet.
Not yet?
It's gonna come back on the twenty-fifth for our final.
Okay, go off to KMP, okay.
Yeah, we've gotta take a look at it.
Any more discussion?
Nope.
Any more discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Uh, new business, state fire codes, update fire line widths.
It's just a one page.
Right, yeah, what's it look like?
It says Howard Snyder email from you, it was just one page, it's at the bottom.
Is that in the comments or, oh.
See, there you go, shake shake your packets, and on the bottom of your packet is one email.
I don't see any of that.
Um, I think uh, this was, I think Howard was gonna talk to the chief to get his response to this.
Yeah.
And um, bring that to the next meeting.
Some of the supplemental.
No, I I.
I'm listening.
I think we were just gonna continue to uh.
Probably just something we need to be cognizant of.
Yeah.
That, you know, when we, when we do site plan reviews and et cetera, we uh, we have to make sure that we get good um. Feedback from the fire department with respect to the widths. That was the only thing. Mr. Chairman.
And we, no, you, no.
I gotta pay him some.
Sir.
What? What?
Other members discussing.
Yeah, what?
We got an email. At home about um. The zoning board's secretary or assistant.
Yep, that just showed up, right?
Yeah, that just showed up.
Yeah.
Um, and I saw part of the meeting today on the cable, cause you can't hear a thing on the computer.
Those, that email that just showed up, those emails and when they come like that, the way that that stuff's happening and it's gonna hopefully continue to happen is that it it, when it comes in. It's gonna go to Howard, Howard will incorporate it into a packet, and then it will become part of our agenda to discuss. Otherwise, people are gonna be sending emails in and then we're gonna all of a sudden start responding to them the night of the meeting and they came in that same week and.
And God knows, we'd we'd never respond to anything like that, um, with, especially when it deals with something that we have an open hearing on. Right?
That's the problem with doing the hearing so quickly. All of these bylaws should be. Uh, given every time we have a meeting, we should do a part of the bylaw. Then when we have it all completed, we have our hearing.
Oh, I understand.
We're dragging these hearings and hearings and hearings and that's.
Right.
And it should be out of the way long ago.
I I think I understand what you're saying, Tilly, but the drawback to that is that as we're discussing and formulating these bylaws. Or if, as any board is doing it, if if we're not doing it in a hearing format. Under the the purview of having a an open hearing, noticed hearing, then people don't have the opportunity to comment.
We have to have a hearing, but I'm talking about completing our bylaw, going over the bylaws.
Before the hearing.
By the board members first, then you, then you post your hearing, then you get. Input from the audience, but it's, the way we're doing it is not, is not working as far as I'm, this is going on. We've really only had like four days, maybe tops, discussing this, even though it started last year. But we've, we haven't had consistency in working on this. So I I just think it should be broken down, a meeting a meeting, you know, a section of our meeting, if there's any improvements on bylaws that we plan on doing. We should be doing a little bit at a time, sinking it in, and then when we're done, have your hearing, post it, do what the requirement that the planning board has to do.
I think, I I I I agree, I I think these right now are part of of way that already got going a while ago to meet the, you know, the town meeting coming up in May. And getting these on the warrant and that sort, so these are what they are, they're they're they're, and and I'm hoping that the next time another one comes up. Cause as I go on on this this next town meeting, um, that they'll be handled differently.
I think so.
I I think we look at it philosophically different, I I think we look at it as though, and and it's very valid, the way you're looking at it, but from my, from the way I look at it. The hearing should be open, you should start developing, improving, writing the bylaw during that whole hearing process.
Oh, I think we're saying the same thing.
And when you're done with it, then you close.
Yeah, yeah, I think we're saying the same thing, I think what what.
Development and you're coming up with something outside of the hearing.
No, no, oh, no, no.
Then opening a hearing.
No, 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 I don't, that's, I don't think that's what Tilly's saying at all.
Oh, okay.
I think Tilly, I think what, I think, I think what she's saying, or what I, what I'm saying is that. This this process of going through this bylaw as one example has been very truncated, has been not at all linear, um, has been very confusing. And I've been an observer more than a participant, um, and I think there is a, this isn't new stuff, there is a way to do bylaws that I think the next time we're doing the bylaw. We'll be able to do it more effectively, more efficiently.
I you're basically saying, open the hearing way earlier.
Can't.
Have having having the.
It's against master conduct.
I know, I know.
Have having 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 a, having a better plan in place.
Yeah.
Having a better plan in place for what's coming up for the year and what all the agenda items are and a schedule for all of them laid out versus a reactionary kind of.
Before the, before the walk, before the walk, because the warrants are.
I'd love to go home, but I need a motion.
Mr. Mo.
So there's been a motion for a public hearing and, uh, it's been seconded by.
Yeah, seconded.
Everybody.
By everybody on favor.
Aye.
All opposed.
How's the snow? How's the snow at your house?